Good evening, I think it's 1:00. So, we're gonna get started with the joint meetings of the City of Franklin and Franklin's Community School Corporation. And like we do first is just all do a roll call or change, please do a roll call and then we'll do a pledge and then we'll get started.
Okay. Mr. Wardens.
Here.
Ms. Hott, here. Ms. Nelson, here. Mr. Lamb.
Here.
Mr. Austin.
Here.
Ms. Jones, here. Mr. Ryan Nielsen.
Here.
Ms. McGinnis, here. Mr. Yukun.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here. Thank you. Do you have a pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thanks. Looks like you had a big crowd tonight, so thanks for the participation and you guys coming to, uh, coming to the meeting. So, first on the agenda, it looks like Franklin City Council discussion. Um, it looks like we have a mayor's, Franklin Mayor's Youth Leadership Council. Is it Kenley Schumaker?
Yes.
Schumacher?
Uh, Schumaker.
Schumaker.
Yeah.
Please.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kenley Schumaker. I'm the Chair of Communications at Franklin Community High School for FMYLC, Franklin Community Leadership Council. I have a cute little update for you guys. So, we have installed a baby box. Um, it's finished, it's installed. Um, we are looking for a date to do the ribbon cutting. We don't have one yet, but we are working on that. Um, we have informational campuses going out around the city. We have counseling offices, women's shelters, and health centers. And then, we're also doing recruitment right now for next year's members. We are really aiming for those eighth graders coming to be freshmen. So, if anyone knows an eighth grader, has an eighth grader, really ask them, you know, do you wanna be part of our council? We would love to have you guys do that. And then, May 9th, we are doing our choosing committee. So, we have a couple members of our council coming together and choosing, you know, next year's council using the applications that we have. And then, we are gonna post the selected May test. And then, the application closes May 7th. And so, yeah, that's pretty much all we have right now. Um, yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kenley. Uh, next on the agenda, it looks like the mayor up for the 2021 Economic Development Community Growth.
Thank you. Glad everyone's here. I'm gonna urge everyone to get your shot, okay? Because it's a lot, but the D and E's being, to not have where it is, please go get your vaccination. So, anyway, I've got mine, by the way. Kenley here was being a little humble. Uh, I'm really proud of our Mayor's Youth Council and seeing them come together, put a project together, see follow through with it. Uh, I think it's good education for the kids. It's good education for me and Tara. It's good to see the work that they put into it. So, thank you guys for that. Economic development, community growth. So, just a little update. I'll try not to go on and on because I really didn't like talking about this kinda stuff because you don't get very, very many chances to really speak about what's going on. Last year, or 2020, assessed value increased another 6%. Worth $1,911,000 in assessed value. Since 2017, that's a 26.18% increase. So, I think that's saying something for the, the way our city's going and people wanna be here and keep adding to our city. Uh, for housing, I know that's a, a big issue. Uh, we have been doing a lot of work to try to get the housing situation under control, but I don't know if we can ever catch up. Uh, I know Love's here on the street, Section 4, there's 200 lots, that's approved. Uh, there's a subdivision that you may have heard that's in the works. Uh, King's Bridge, which is south of Nobwood, it's not quite the nation's bridge, but it's, it's, uh, gonna be coming, it's gonna be coming to the Plan Commission, City Council in the next few weeks. Uh, that's 225 lots. Like I said, it's just south of Nobwood. Uh, 75 to 80 foot wide lots. And I know sometimes, um, I wanna say that there's been some area subdivision with 50 foot blocks. Uh, we're trying to make sure that we get to little bigger lots from here on out. Uh, so 75 to 80 foot there, there's two commercial, uh, lots, and there's also a multi-family units that's been proposed. Uh, the right of property, which is west of Cumberland, it's been approved. Just because it's been approved, it doesn't mean it's gonna start now. It's just they can go get all the permits they need to do that. So, there's 125 lots there. Uh, Multi Pro, uh, here in Franklin, a developer local, east of the fire station 22. They're getting ready to, uh, submit 160 units. Uh, New Port Square, Department of Commerce, Department of Commerce here, 10,000 square feet of retail and 25 condos, it's right downtown. Uh, there's two additional subdivisions that, uh, we're working on now. We're not gonna be able to say, uh, but I know they're doing their due diligence and really want to do this. The two together will be 400 more lots. And there's two multifamily, uh, projects that we're working on, which would be 160 units. So, there's a lot of stuff in the works and it takes a long time to get something accomplished. Uh, let's talk about the commercial that's under construction up on US 31, south of Nobwood. Uh, what you see, that is not the subdivision, that is assisted living complex that's being built. Corner of Grand Commerce, uh, shelving materials, uh, east of the interstate, GDI, 940,000 square foot building. Uh, Simon Road and US 31, people are for Shell Building 2, which is G and H Orthodynamics, is taken. Shell Building, uh, should be closing in the next week or so on that. And then, there's 468, there's east of the interstate, which is Sunbeam Development Corporation. They're the ones that brought Energizer. Uh, that is already in annex and ready to go. They're telling me in, in, uh, the planning department, in the next five to 10 years, they plan on spending $350 million and have 468. So, that's gonna be a big development for the city of Franklin. Uh, and I just wanna talk a little bit about, you know, whenever you hear, um, tax abatements. For example, Energizer, Sunbeam Development Corporation brought Energizer here. With that state of vacant lot where Energizer is, in 10 years, the taxes is $15,874. 10 years, even with the tax abatement, they will pay $6.9 million in taxes. After 20 years, as those payments grows off, they'll be paying $19,900,000. And in 20 years, with those vacant lots, they'd be there, $31,000. So, you can see when people say, why do you want to develop for these kinda buildings? And you hear of shell buildings. So, it's, they're not only shell buildings, these buildings are being built by developers that can bring manufacturing, logistics, warehouse. They're there, but our taxes are gonna be the same no matter what it is. And the wages, some people get, uh, misunderstanding on wages. These, these buildings, uh, $16, $18, $20 an hour, and we have manufacturing jobs, it's $13,50, $14,50. So, I'd really like to give a chance, I'd be able to bring that to people's attention that these buildings are more than just a, a building that's there vacant. Energizer, when it's all filled out, it's gonna be 400 employees. Uh, also, I want to bring to your attention, but I'm not sure that, you know, TIF is, is a, if not used right, it can hurt the schools. We realize that. I think that Franklin has done a real good job, uh, managing the TIF, which would help assess value to help the schools grow. Uh, another thing about the TIF, uh, personal property is not, is not, uh, taken by the TIF district. The personal property goes back into the other taxing units. We choose to do that. We could, if we wanted to do that, but we don't wanna do that. So, just for example, 2018, 19, uh, there was $261,000 in personal property taxes collected. 2020, '21, there was 610,000. That just went up in just a short period of time, 117%. And as these buildings keep coming on, that we're talking about over the next five years or so, it's, you know, and it's TIF, okay? So, it's gonna help the, it's gonna help the city manage the TIF, but it's also gonna get back to our schools with the personal property. As these buildings come on and you're gonna see more income for the schools. So, I just wanted to point that out, that not every single thing in the TIF area is taken by the TIF district. So, on projects, uh, we're working on that, which has already been out for bid. Uh, we're working on the roundabout at Arden's and Commerce. That's $1.3 million. We got $1.4 million worth of paving, uh, projects. Let's go into the city council, I believe, to get it approved. Maybe in a week or so, the bid is rolling down. Uh, Joe Black Road, Phase 1 of where Sunbeam's doing some of that development. Uh, it's gonna be started soon. $527,000. South Street, old US 31, still in repay, $444,000. Alley paving, $287,000. All-in right parking lot repairs, $36,500. Uh, with all those abandoned bid and getting awarded to contractors. We're gonna resurface all parking lots, resurface all the trails. Uh, our street department just did a great job on Park Avenue, adding sidewalks there. Uh, and yes, the stoplight at I-65, everybody's down by there recently. That construction there, that whole area is gonna be redone, stoplights on and off of the ramps on both sides. And that's way over the, uh, Amphitheater down here. It's supposed to be completed in late August. Uh, and I know our parks department was wanting to have a ball festival there, um, in the end of September. Personally, I know, and I need to slow down because I'm not sure it's gonna be ready when we talk about putting sod on the ground and trying to get it settled in. So, it may be next year we're gonna get our first festival there. Speaking of festivals, we are carrying on this year with our festivals downtown, working with the help of the park department to make sure that we can do it in a safe manner. Uh, we have Grand, Grand Street Sewer Water Project, $260,000. Uh, US 31 Sewer Project, $190,000. And east of I-65, the sewer project that was just awarded, uh, $3.6 million. And a couple other little things that I wanna talk about real quick is just the school flashing speed limit signs. I don't know if, if the school board has noticed that. City Council, the city, uh, approved to do that last year. It's up and be surprised how many parents have told me they appreciate those, uh, speed limit signs that are flashing. Also, we're talking about with the school corporation, with Jeff and Dr. Plin Dinning, uh, at some point, a roundabout at Simon and Commerce, uh, our engineering department to start to look at that. So, we know that would help with the traffic there, plus it will also help with economic development in that, in that area with, with the fields beside it. Uh, also, the last thing I got, uh, I just wanna give you an update on, this is the last thing today, I just wanna give you an update on, uh, environmental status. So, I was just on a phone call with EPA before we come down here. Uh, EPA and the anthanol site, it's 65% complete. So, what we mean by that is all this contamination down the street is gone, the street's redone, you see that? Now they're concentrating on site with the anthanol. Uh, they'll, they still have a little bit of contamination on the anthanol site that's not gone, but still testing and trying to figure out the best way to get that. But it's not going outside because they have to pump the treat system. So, the next step is, uh, putting a barrier wall around it, okay? With how the EPA does this and, and chemicals have, it's like the, the contamination has to go through it, it filters it, and then the clean water comes through and contamination stays there. Well, what they wanna do with that, put the barrier around it, how the water flows. And then they will shut off the pump and treat system, and then they will start putting injections into the plume that's on the site, like they put the injections in the plume that was on Forside Street, which it has cleared that up. It's working, that's why they're doing this. So, I've been told by this time next year, we should have some really good insight on the anthanol site, or good news on the anthanol site, on a good story to tell our community. Which I think it's a good story now from where we started, and I think all of us in this room know that we're a good place. Uh, the Warrior Oil Site, uh, it was tested, no further action needed, it's a clean site. Uh, Franklin Power Products, all we heard about was Franklin Power Products, what they did. They did this, they did that. Quite honestly, when it was all said and done with the testing, Franklin Power Products did nothing. And that property is clean, there's no further action needed, we're testing and stuff. Uh, the old Co-op, that's another one, that it just had to be contaminated. Uh, that's where Rams is at now. It's been tested, there was a little bit of soil that was taken out, there's no further action, it's cleaned up. Radwell, uh, Radwell was, uh, was another one they thought could've contributed to that. They did not. Radwell is 95% complete, no further action, they're waiting on some paperwork. Uh, Arden, uh, Arden is the same way, everybody just knew Arden had to be bad. Well, all the testing they've done, they're 95% complete. Uh, they need some paperwork and they got one other short area, a short place they wanna get part of the project, they wanna test. Then the Holman Cannon Factory, that's close to our schools. The Holman Cannon Factory is 45% complete. We're still doing some testing, they took out that one place that was contaminated, they're doing more testing. And they're also testing out where the plume is, and I just heard today that there's like three wells there today, uh, three wells there. One well has absolutely no contamination in it, it's a little bit deeper. There's two shallow wells, uh, do, and they're, they're looking, doing the same thing once they get done with testing for this, is doing the, uh, injections into it. So, I really feel good that we're in a good place with our contamination, uh, issues and I think at some point. And the reason that we couldn't get that out before, we didn't really have all the, all the answers. I mean, we knew that, the IDM, EPA was telling us that it's, it's not, it's not that, it's not that, it's not that. But we didn't say that because we didn't have the, the proof, we didn't have it in writing. And now we have all that, and I feel pretty comfortable about getting the word out and, and saying what we have to say about it. Uh, one other thing here, Dr. Plin Dinning, Terry Crater, and I've been working to, you know, try to have them figure out to make us more an inclusive city and, and everybody feels safe and comfortable, and we're all doing our part, I think. And one part, one thing that the city has done, uh, equipped the Franklin Police Department, body and car cans, they're all up and running. We hired a licensed management official and a therapy dog through the police department. Uh, every city employee attended a complete, and completed, uh, inclusive bias training. Uh, I think that was taken over our news, well received from our employees. Uh, we're looking to, uh, hire a human resource person to assist with inclusion and diversity in our city workforce. Uh, host meetings with our community partners to discuss and educate and celebrate inclusion and diversity in the city. And, you know, one thing that I think sends a very strong message, and I said this to David Journal not too long ago, whenever you have our Mayor's Youth Council and you have Rotary Interact Club, paint a mural on a box down here with a person of color and a white arm holding, and say, be the change, if that's not sending a message to your community of what you wanna be, where you wanna go, I don't know what more you can do. So, thank you guys for that, that's awesome. So, anyway, am I having questions for you? I know, I was asking, uh, Mr. Adam Stone was here today, and whenever you get to it, if there's any questions on TIF, county TIF, you know, we've all heard about that little bit of a controversial maybe, that Adam's here to explain. I know, uh, had a couple of the school members asking about it, so he's here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so, Krista, and I, and I forgot to introduce Krista. So, yeah, sorry, Krista. We've got a busy day. So, Krista's got a real good, uh, thing that I think we need to show today on working together, where the city and the county have been working, uh, on some bad tax properties that, that I think we're being impressed with. And also, it talks about, a little bit about the TIF, uh, out on the east side, uh, where the red carpet and property is bad. So, now, thank you.
So, Crystal Lakey, Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, true about me. Uh, but Crystal Lakey, I'm Community Development Director and also, um, the staff for the Franklin Development Corporation. And so, Mayor asked me, um, to give this presentation, and I'll try to give a little bit of an review for those of you in the room that have already heard this presentation, so I apologize. Um, but I wanted to go through, um, and just kinda give a summary since there's been, um, quite a bit of progress. Um, the city has partnered with the county on several of these problem properties. So, when a, um, property doesn't pay its taxes, or they don't move their grass, or there's trash, or in this case, a building was actually demolished. Um, this is the first one, when, um, state code changed, that we were allowed to go through this process. So, all in, there's like over $347,000 worth of taxes and liens on this red carpet property. It was at the gateway, um, you know, right at the I-65 entrance in 2012, if you guys remember. Uh, it was the number one source of police and fire runs. Uh, there was a death lab in this location that was found, uh, before demolition, asbestos, all kinds of things. Um, and so, when this goes through the tax certificate process, the county agrees and the city agrees, all of those back taxes and liens are basically wiped clean and forgiven. So, nobody gets repaid for any of those things, but they're not getting paid anyway, um, for the last several years. And so, this property, um, came to the state through the board works, through a change in Indiana code that, that started this tax certificate process. So, we were able to demolish this building, and it was part of an economic development agreement, an incentive agreement, um, for the redevelopment of this area. We actually, through the redevelopment commission, did a I-65 interchange plan. Um, there was a strip mall in front of this, if, if you remember that, that, you know, was half vacant, um, had a number of tenants over the years, the parking lot was in disrepair. Um, so that was part of an overall incentive in that area. Uh, the next slide will show you, um, the parcel valuation. So, the existing parcels, um, before any redevelopment occurred, the total, uh, assessed value for these was just $3,691,000. And so, uh, when this property was redeveloped and the, the redevelopment commission, um, through our TIF district, um, put in a new road, so Paris Drive. The next slide shows the, um, the new roundabout there for Paris Drive and Grandville Drive. Uh, that was $4,367,000 that the, the TIF district, um, used to pay for this, this road improvement. And what I wanted to also make sure I mentioned is that this area is not a TIF district, it is adjoining to a TIF district. Uh, but that was part of the agreement with the county commissioners, is that the east half of this area would not be designated as a TIF district. So, none of this increased assessed value is captured and allocated just for the TIF district. Uh, we could've done the west side of this new Paris Drive, but we did not do that either. So, all of this new assessed value, which for 2021, um, went from $346 million to over $15 million, um, just in eight years. Um, so that change of valuation is $11,555,000. And again, all of those taxes are flowing through to schools, to the library, to all of the city, the county, all the taxing amenities. Um, and also, something to note is, you know, there was those back taxes and liens that didn't get paid on the red carpet property, it was about $347,000. From 2020 to 2021, these parcels paid $580,134 in taxes. So, just in two years, we more than recouped those back taxes, um, by redeveloping. And there are still two lots that haven't developed in this area, so, um, and this was the Culver's Lot, you can see it's still under construction. Um, so you, there's still development that can occur and assessed value that's gonna occur in this area that will, um, increase the overall assessed value. So, that was a great, great success story, great partnership, um, with the county and the city. Um, and we're just really excited to see all of the, the changes that have occurred in this area. The next slide shows you the first of several residential properties. So, this is another one, um, that was a tax sale and the taxes were, were higher than what the property was worth, and so it didn't sell, a tax sale for two years. Uh, so we went through the process again, and, um, this is on 551 West Madison Street. Um, it was acquired in 2017. And what, um, the FTC did for these residential properties is we took requests for proposals. So, it wasn't necessarily who was gonna pay us the most, or, you know, the, those kinds of things, but it was who was gonna put the most money into the project, who was gonna do the most repairs to the project, to the property. Um, so it was discovered, um, by the locals that this was one of the first law cabins in Franklin. Um, so the top right corner, it's kinda hard to see, but that's all the, the wood beams exposed, they had exposed all of that in there, and they found bottles and all these tools that were used, and they have those all in display in there. We actually, I would like to talk somebody about maybe even doing some school tours there or something, because they have these great write-ups about, you know, the people that lived in this property, and they've researched it, they've done an awesome job. Um, but it was a single family before, it'd been vacant for a number of years, and this is what it looks like now. So, this is a great, another great story. They did pay $10,500 for this property to the Franklin Development Corporation, which helped cover some of our costs of the attorney's fees and things like that to get a clear title, um, and, you know, pay some of the property taxes during that time. So, the change in valuation here, this was valued at $44,300, it's now $91,800. Um, so a definite increase there. The next one is 421 West Jefferson Street. Uh, and this was one hopefully you're familiar with, because this is a partnership through the school corporation. And so, this is, um, the, again, the request for proposals. We had a private developer purchase the property, um, from the FTC for $7,500, but I know the school was involved, they, there was some demolition and some workdays that were done on the property. Um, again, this had been vacant for a number of years, code enforcement calls about, you know, people kinda living in and off of there. There's, you know, raccoons and trash and all these, just real problem property in the neighborhood. Uh, so it was purchased in 2019. Um, this was done really quickly, so the, it, it new assessed value in 2020 was $154,700. It was purchased in August of 2020 for $209,000. Uh, so another great success story here. Uh, it's a great looking house and, um, just another, you know, big change in that area and real visible on Jefferson Street, West Jefferson Street. Um, it does remain a single family. So, this next one, um, 348 Kentucky, uh, it's hard to really picture how bad this was. There was a hole this size in the roof, which you can't see. Um, water damage, storm damage, there was a tree kinda growing out of it. Um, there were 20 some cats living in this house. Um, there were, I think, five apartments here, um, off and on at different times, that had been, uh, in our unsafe building hearing process for a number of years. Uh, people had to be evicted because of unsafe conditions, it wasn't connected to sewer at one point. Uh, just a long list of things that were wrong with this property and a lot of complaints about this one. The value, the assessed value was higher than you would imagine at $107,000 because there were five apartments here, so it's assessed as a commercial property. So, the change in valuation on this one's not as great because now it's a single family and it's assessed as a single family. Um, but I think the neighborhood would agree that there's a, a huge improvement with this one, and it is being done by people that live there, that still live there, um, they love the property, and they've done a great job, um, remodeling it. So, excited to see that one. Uh, this one is still kind of a work in progress by 44 West Jefferson Street. Again, this one had four apartments in the house and one in the garage. Um, this was also in our unsafe building hearing process. We boarded windows and doors several times, once it was abandoned totally. Um, lot of grass mowing, there were cats living here as well, the neighbors were feeding. Um, but this, again, was assessed as multifamily, so it was even, it was still low, $28,600. Um, the assessed value for this actually went down because part of the structure has been torn off, the garage has been demolished, those kinds of things. But, um, this is, uh, was purchased from the FTC by a contractor, Connor Contracting. And so, they, they did stay in their proposal that they were gonna work on this kind of envisioning jobs and, you know, those kinds of things, it would take longer to restore this one. Uh, but they, they are working on it again, and we hope this year it'll be finished. And I, I can only imagine what that assessed value will be once it's restored. There's been a lot of interior work done, which is, you know, you don't see from the outside, but they've been very careful to save the trim and, and holding, you know, all this kinda staircase as much as they can to restore it. So, I'm excited to see this one. Um, this one is 934 Johnson Avenue. Uh, this is a vacant lot, so it's a little bit different here. Um, so the property before was assessed as a home site, so its best value was $11,700. And now, um, through our process- And now through our process, we gave preference to any adjoining property owners. So this property went to the property owner next door, homeowner next door, who was mowing the grass anyway and cleaning up the property anyway. So while the assessed value went down, their assessed value of their home has increased of their home site. So there really isn't a loss in assessed value, it's just a bit of a redistribution, I would say. And they're just really excited to have control of that adjoining property now. Same for this next one at 244 Cincinnati Street. This was purchased by the adjoining property owner and it's now sort of a home site. It's residential access acreage, but again, the house that is adjoining, their property values have increased. So that just brings me up to this year. And this is 280 Circle Drive. This has been vacant for 14 years. The assessed value is $71,200. The driveway is completely overgrown. The Franklin Development Corporation, this, this went to tax sale for several years. This actually, a house sits on two parcels and there's a third parcel that was the driveway. So the third parcel that was the driveway was like a hundred and some dollars in taxes every year. So those taxes got paid, but the $37,000 in back taxes from the actual house didn't get paid. So nobody's going to buy this at tax sale because you couldn't get all three parcels. So the Franklin Development Corporation approached the property owners and we actually outright purchased that third parcel for $2,500 from the owners. And then we're able to work, we actually got the deeds in the mail today for the parcels of the house that's on. And so we will do a complete exterior and interior renovation on this property this year. There's a lot of volunteer work and things like that. It's just a great partnership again between the county and the city and Franklin Development Corporation. We're, we're working with Franklin Heritage on some volunteer work and labor. We hope to be able to provide more affordable housing. I know there's a huge shortage and I know it's just one house, but as of today, there's one property in all of Johnson County under $150,000. And so we're looking at hopefully making this about $140,000. And then also just getting us back on the tax rolls and starting to do taxes again and not having to mow the lawn and those kinds of things. So that will happen this year. And then this is a different project. This is 650 Hurricane Street. And it, it kind of looks like if you touched it really hard, it might just fall over. It is, it is in really bad shape. There's been some demo work done. The person that owned it previously just kind of lost interest in rehabbing it. We did purchase this property for $17,000, basically to solve this problem in this neighborhood. And we hope to use the proceeds from Circle Drive to put into this property and again, have some kind of more affordable housing availability and then just eliminate, you know, a nuisance property in this neighborhood. So we're excited about that. Once we get Circle Drive done, then we'll move on and hopefully do both of those two projects this year. I think that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions? What else you can do? There we go, the commission in that court. I don't know.
Professor, thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a seat on your mayor for a project update. I assume you did the project update, correct? Okay. So next up, too, is the Franklin City Council action items. The SRO partnership with the city.
It is, Mr. President, and it's actually mislabeled because technically it's always approved by our board of works. But I thought this would be the right time to bring it forward because this is our agreement that we have this school corporation, we're simply renewing it as we have done in the past. And it's executed by our board of works, but I'm just going to take this up through your name to call it to you because I certainly can't speak for the school corporation, but I think we've had a tremendous success in cooperation. Dr. Sewell, Dr. Plendening, and Mr. Yellen, attorney for the school corporation, and I have renewed it, adjusted some of the provisions since Roger isn't here. Presumably you don't like our bar rest or whatever, I'm not sure. But essentially it remains as it's currently been in existence. There was a provision previously and the mayor called the school corporation to implement funding through the Department of Homeland Security that provides $50,000, which was going to go to the SROs. Quite frankly, the school corporation also needed additional school resource officers. So that money, with the consent of the board of works and the mayor in the past, is now used to pray some of the avenues, the county, the sheriff's department there for their school resource officer. But the school corporation continues to look for additional grants or monies that may be out there so they can raise the work costs. Chief Cochran, if you appear, I think you'll be confident we'll be able to save you. This has value, I hope the school corporation feels it, but it also has value for us in the sense of having someone there in the school, in the school provides a lot of information, provides the ability to do community outreach, provides our ability to interview students that they can help us, gives us a base in the school corporation. So it's our intent to have it on the board of works agenda next Monday for approval. This is for the 21, 22, wow, they're already, the 21, 22 school of the year. So we will be operating the existing one into the, I hope it will be approved and then the school corporation will, as we, as we approach it, we did approve it. That's my thing, certainly, and it's your job.
Any questions? Okay, great. So next on the agenda is Franklin community school discussion, the strategic plan 2020-2030. Dr. Plendening.
Thank you very much. It's been a few years since we've all gathered together because of COVID impacts of this, but it's a great opportunity for the partnership and collaboration to come together for us. So I want to first just reintroduce everybody. Since we last met, I think Jeff Mercer and Deb were getting ready to set off into the sunset of retirement and do some other things. And we brought on two outstanding leaders to help. Our CFO is Tina Gross. She's also continuing to work in partnership on the FTC and some other things. So all the things that you got to see today, she's a big voice in supporting the school side. And then we have Dr. Warland. Dr. Warland's in charge of curriculum, instructions, counselors, everything else that we can think of. That's a good thing, asking about superintendent. Pass off to Dr. Warland. And then we have Jeff Sewell, Jeff with us for several years now. He is in charge of operations. And then Matt Stroff could not be with us today, he's a director of technology. Matt had a family work scene, so there's a section in it. Today's program, I'm going to take your hand with the partnership with Rick, there in a few minutes. But we have been talking about the school district and the city partnership for many years. And as you heard from the mayor, we're growing. We've been growing. We had a stagnant period there with the recession hit and some of those things, but you're seeing we're going to take off again. So that's going to impact us a great deal. One of the things that's happened is that Creekside continues to grow. It's our largest elementary school. And so we decided that it was time now to reevaluate some things inside of that. We also had our expiring strategic plan. It was in place for 10 years and we decided we're going to marry these two things together. So tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about our strategic plan. I'm going to enlist Tina and Hope to come up here and talk a little bit about their parts because we had a long conversation. This actually started before COVID. I gathered together students and faculty, parents around. The conversation is how we continue our progress in the 20s. So what do we look like in 2030? This is our mission statement. It's a mouthful and I'm sure if I asked Kelly, she could just recite it immediately. I'm just kidding. But what we do want to do is get to the point where people can say we're about dream, connect, adventure, achieve. That's actually still going to be the mission statement right above it. But when we talk about who we are, we want people to think about our school history in those four words. And so tonight, you're going to hear about a strategic plan that does that, that allows the kids to really have a great environment. Still building some of the same guiding principles, but we have five of them inside of it. You're going to hear a little bit more about that. But the dream, connect, adventure, achieve really speaks to our mission statement now. Together we achieve more, achieve greatness, etc. We started with about eight people in this conversation, strategic plan. And really, the main topics were around what do we look like? And in that grade 5 through 8, who all wants to go back to middle school? Most people say no. However, it's a great time. But a lot of people would say with our 5, 6 building and our 7, 8 building, there was really no identity. What is that identity? They come in, they leave, they go on to the next one. So we really had a conversation on what does grades 5 through 8 look like for us. We also talked about what do we want to keep in terms of individual student growth. We know the state placed upon us a new graduation path. So all sophomores this year and below, so Kelly's class all the way down, have to have a new diploma. They have to have a way to show that they're ready even for college or career. So we had to adjust to that as well. And then we also need to redistrict. We need to make some changes. The last time that was before us was in the 90s. I arrived here in 2009, so it's been a long time since we had a conversation about redistricting. The mayor just talked about some of those opportunities that are growing. We can't have all of them go to Creekside. And if you would actually throw Krista's map back up there and our school map, guess where they would all go? Most of them would be at Creekside. Some kids would go to Northwood and Webb and Needham and kind of be out here getting a few. And Union will still be getting very few until the 69 corridor, which is going to change that dramatically as we move forward. So we had to come prepared with a new plan. So that's what we did. COVID hit, we hit stop, and then we brought it all back. We did some virtual experiences. I will tell you, the virtual actually gathered more people in the conversations than some of our in-person meetings because it was just able to adapt to them. So next slide, please. I just talked about all those things that we needed to do. And you're going to see a conversation started and we're going to go check all those boxes off and really create the fingerprints for Franklin schools in the 20s. So go ahead, the next one. As I said, we have five guiding principles. Individual student growth was always our most important and still reigns supreme for us. But we wanted to also talk about culture for the teachers. Now, last time we talked about we need to hire and retain awesome people. Tonight, you're going to help us. We're going to actually hire our new basketball coach. The board's going to vote. He's here and we're going to talk to him in a second. We're also going to hire a food service director. But we also need to recruit and retain. The mayor mentioned our diversity opportunity conversation. You know what? Our kids need to continue to have great people in their lives. So we said, how do we do that? And we have a major part of our strategic plan, professional growth, innovation. And then we need to be able to sustain what we're doing. Just as Jeff was great at telling Dave no, Tina is great at telling Dave no. But what we're able to do though is be very physically sound. You know what? We noticed from our journey together, circuit breaker did have an impact on Franklin schools. And thankfully, through partnership with the city, in 2019, we're able to pass the referendum and our teachers are reaping the benefit of pay, our support staff and some of those things. But Tina has to continue to figure out how does that move forward? We've been very thankful and blessed that the state's also impacting and doing some positive things. And so tonight, we're going to tell you in more detail. So the first one up, Dr. Warland's in charge of this structure on enriching, engaging, and equitable learning environment. And she's just going to hit a highlight of some of the early concepts that we have.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening. Under individual student growth, there are actually three different goals. This one is the first and it's fairly comprehensive. If you want to go ahead and go through the next slide, you can see some of the more concrete details when we're talking about our environment and carving back to that concept of inclusivity and partnerships and working together. The top bullet is about alternative educational pathways. When we talk about students in our environment, we have some students that a traditional educational environment doesn't always serve. And so we're having deeper conversations about what those opportunities are. What is that continuum of education? What does that look like? So that's bullet one. The second bullet kind of compiles a bunch of different things, but we're really talking about how we're serving all of our underrepresented students, celebrating those differences and ensuring that meeting the needs of every student that comes through. Global understanding and awareness. If you remember that before COVID, we were talking about COOJ and partnerships around that opportunity for students. And so making sure those conversations, those partnerships do not die. And so through the course of this tenure plan, you will start seeing bits and pieces of that particular component. Dr. Plendening mentioned this 5 through 8 experience, looking at how we team our teachers, how we build relationships between adults and students, and how we provide more opportunities for students outside of the classroom setting. That was one of the key things we heard from parents, especially with regards to that CDIS experience, that 5, 6, are there more opportunities for students to get engaged outside of the classroom? And Dr. Plendening already mentioned redistricting, people start, if you haven't already heard, there are ongoing conversations. So the next goal under this particular main objective of individual student growth is college and career readiness. Jerry, you can go ahead. Dr. Plendening again mentioned graduation pathways. Some of you have probably already heard us talk about pathways because partnerships are a key piece of that for our students. We're already piloting senior projects. As we engage with more and more students in that experience, more and more of you will hopefully be involved. So you will be seeing our faces as we talk about opportunities for students. STEM is one of our key pathways, so that's why that's that first bullet there. Okay, year 12, STEM education. And finally, social emotional health is the third goal under this section of the plan. As many of you probably know, safety, mental health were part of our referendum conversations. We continue to look at the effectiveness of what we're doing and evaluate the needs of students and frankly, staff in our, in our schools, refining those experiences, refining our curriculum through our counseling program. And really, again, we mentioned connect, looking at how we build relationships with students, with each other, and then with adults and outside the building as well, employers and in schools and higher ed, both secondary. So those are three pieces of that first, first goal.
On employment, if you want to make sure that we do focus on retaining and bringing people to us. We want to make sure that our kids have great teachers, you know? At the end of the line, when we hire somebody, they get to talk to me. And we talk a lot about, you know, why they're going to be here and it happened. So we're continuing to look at how do we do that? One thing is to look at a diverse pool. We don't want all students to come from IU. You know, we don't want all the kids to come from Purdue or whatever. We'd also like to continue to show kids people of different walks that have experiences in the university. So we are doing that. The mayor talked about the diversity. One of the things that we're doing on May the 10th, we've hired consultants to work this all school year on inclusion, diversity, and equity. We're starting our focus group conversation. And many of you will be a part of the community side of the focus group conversation. There are going to be, Dr. Aziz is going to meet with our board on the 10th. We're also going to talk to students as the very first focus group about what do they see inside the school in terms of including and diversity, you know, looking at growth through the teachers. We want to make sure that we have competitive wages. You know, one of the things that we have always prided ourselves on since I've been here and with Mr. Mercer and Alvin Missgrove is the systemic thinking structure and making sure that we have great decisions being made through a very thoughtful process. And benefits and wages come into play. Thank you to the community, we are competitive in that. We're in the middle of our peer group. We're going to continue to evaluate that. We just reevaluated that peer group and we now have a new peer group based on some of the economic changes that you started out. Next. And then one of the things that we've talked about is the 10x brand, right? You guys have heard about 10x? We've got kids, actually, the blue house that Krista talked about was a 10x brand. We've got kids, actually, the blue house that Krista talked about was a 10x grant. It was a student 10x grant. Student wrote and wanted to write the blueprints and find out about the history of the house. When COVID came and we had this pause on 10x. However, we want to now take this time to reinvent 10x. What does it look like? You know, for teachers, it is about providing them new knowledge and structure, anti-class strength, and anti-kids. But is it more than that? We want to continue to provide 10x for kids. We thought it was a great opportunity right before COVID. One of the things that the Franklin Education Connection has created, we have a fund now that actually is going to promote that travel piece for kids. They're going to have a chance to write grants for kids to go into Puji. IU has IU's Honors Travel Program that takes place in the summer. So we see that value. So 10x is going to be how we're going to do that, and we're looking to bring that back to all three persons of Black established students. Next slide, please. And then we want to make sure that we continue to look at employee innovation and...
I think we can go on to the next slide. Yes. I'm going to take this off. I hope the teacher voice... So the role of finance in all of this is to make sure that we can fund the initiatives and projects that Dr. Warland and Dr. Quinn Danning spoke about. So that's going to be all about identifying new revenue resources, lobbying the state for more funding, identifying grants that we might be able to apply more in, or the partnerships that we talked about here tonight. We are definitely grateful for the referendum funding. That's made a huge impact both on the teacher and the support staff side. We were able to raise our starting salary for teachers to $40,000. And I can tell you, the state's really going to be focused on that for the next few years. And they're already saying that schools are going to have to justify to the Department of Education why their starting salaries aren't at that level. So we are very fortunate that we don't have to do that. And with the increases in A V that are happening, we'll be able to stay competitive in that market. So thanks to all the improvements from that. So we talked about revenue generating. More work in the area of identifying efficiencies. You know, we've historically used six different tools and planned to study adjust to make sure that we are using our dollars wisely and that if there are any gaps, that we can grab some savings and allocate those towards new projects. So we'll continue to do that. We do have some work to do in our buildings. We've had feasibility study done, and we've identified some priority areas that we need to focus on in every building across the district. So we're going to be looking to earmark some dollars over the next few years to address some of those projects.
So one of the things that in the last time people would say to me is, "How are we tracking our success in entering the individual student growth, libraries, and communication?" So this time, we're actually creating a dashboard that will be on our website, all those things for people to see, to say, "How are we going to..." Go to the next slide. You'll see an example of the dashboard that we're going to have up. And it will talk about all those main topics that we just highlighted. And we want people to hold us accountable. We want to make sure that we're doing what we say we're going to do over the 20 to 2030 that matters to us, but most importantly, matters to the kids. The kids need great. And if we do all these things, I'm pretty confident our kids are going to get an awesome education like they did the last 10 years we've been with them at. Next slide, please. So this is the last bit that we're going to show you on our agreements and different things. We're going to see these little dots come alive. So this will be on our website. You'll click on one of them, and it will highlight what we're doing. This is a transformational map, another six sigma tool that we are using. We want people to understand how important this plan is for us in order to sustain the vision that we have of green, connected venture and achievement. Any questions?
Dr. Quinn Danning, I know part of your vision statement, such as partnering with corporate teams here in Franklin. And as we grow, continue to grow, whether it's the Japanese sector within S K and Essex or Ottawa and others, obviously, hoping you guys are connecting with them, hoping to get funding and things of that nature for travel, for grants, or whatever. I assume you guys are doing that. I know you guys are. But as we grow, I think it's an important part of that.
It really is an important part. We did secure funding for the Puji trip through that conversation and will continue to do that. We're also looking for some other opportunities. Right before COVID hit, I see Dr. Crowe Strand had a group of students from Italy that were due to come and spend a week with us. So we're lucky to continue to see our kids be exposed to that. But we're going to ask for the businesses and partnerships. One of the things that's important is for the kids, once they leave us, it's also maybe think about coming back here, right? I have four boys. I should hope that sometime they come and live close. Right now, Seattle's not very close in Colorado, but they are looking at those things. We want to highlight the partnership opportunities that we have to save those kids. Because even live here and still have a goal respect, so thank you for running in. All right, no other questions. I'm going to shift to another partnership that we've had for the past four years, and that's going to be IT partnership between the city and school. When Steve and I were having one of our monthly meetings several years ago, we talked about how can we help each other? You guys were growing in your IT needs, but didn't have the ability to really go out and fund a separate IT person. Rick was doing about six hats at once, and, you know, trying to help. And then Matt, Matt will do the same thing for us. So we said, "What if we come together? Let's help collaborate on what we're doing." And so we've had some success in that, and tonight, now we're here. I know he would thank the city for allowing us to see underneath the hood and make some decisions. One of the early projects that we did together was the fiber project, where we created fiber opportunities between the city and the school to give us both a better economic paying for our bond. And that continues. So go ahead. These were the goals that we had back when we started for our school district. And you'll notice that third was collaboration with the city, Franklin. We have S R O program outstanding. We have the IT partnership. We continue to partner with, you know, F T C and different things. And this IT partnership was one to help us. Next slide, please. So benefits to the city from where Matt was sitting, you know, was continuing to provide training opportunities. That's one of the things that, it just takes dollars. I know Rick picked Matt, afraid, and we talked a lot to him. I know Rick, if you want to talk to Mr. Will, I went to him right before his math, called me in about 10 minutes ago, before his games are, said he's not going to make it because of our intention, weren't you? So I said, "Rick, guess what? You and I need to do this presentation." So Rick, he's seen the slides, and he'll be able to jump in and talk about this. But the side of the city benefits are on these four bullets. Go ahead.
Thank you, everyone. I did have a, at the tenth meeting with the mayor, Dr. Quinn Danning, right prior to the time that this agreement needed to be renewed. So we had lunch, and we went through these slides. I did have an opportunity. Matt gets all the credit. You know, I talked with him ahead of time. He prepared the PowerPoint. But first of all, I couldn't say that I couldn't be more pleased with how this has worked out. The first three years went really fast. Couldn't believe it. Come time, and we had to have lunch and talk about this renewal, which the school board and the board of the board decided this was... But the four points here, more responsive and thorough. Prior, we had agreements with IT companies out of Indianapolis, sometimes Vietnam, to the city in a timely manner, which wasn't a problem for us. Training opportunities for myself. Matt is a symbol of a great team. Worked very closely with them, and I learned a lot from them. So additional training opportunities were brought to the table as well. Dr. Quinn Danning already touched on the better pricing. We buy power, and really, we go out together, you know, you get us both. You know, you're looking to do business with the school corporation and the city of Franklin. So we partner every opportunity that we can. And then, you know, the bottom line in doing so, benefits taxpayers, your taxpayers and our taxpayers. And if we can, you know, save a little money on both ends, then our taxpayers are benefiting
So as we look at how it benefits the school, number one, we have that four bullet collaboration, and I think that's a big change for us. We do have better pricing. When we go talk to Metro Met and other vendors, C W to say, we can pull it together. I will tell you that Matt's talked to a lot of IT directors throughout the state of Indiana, and they're very impressed and amazed that the city and the school can actually come together and make these things work. They asked, "How does this work for you guys here?" And Matt then explains what we do. You know, Matt and his team of Dustin and Doug and then Maria, who are back here, been taking tonight, you know, they are on your call and beckoning when something happens. And through this gift that we have in collaboration, we benefit the entire community. Next slide, please.
So here's where the real geek can make it come out. Lynn can tell you. She's, Matt chairs our telecommunications council as well, and Lynn's been legal counsel for the telecommunications.
I absolutely speak in English, not Tamil. Coming down from...
So she can tell you, we're really excited. But I will go into detail on every item. You can look down this list. This is, these are items that we collaborated on and things that we did in the first three years. If you see anything on there you want to know any detail on, I can tell you. And then the next slide, Tara. These are upcoming tasks. These are, some of these items are already underway, nearly complete, top of the list there. Dr. Quinn Danning already mentioned the fiber contract renewal. A few years ago, when the school's contract was coming up, ours was, although they were at different times. We've now aligned those so that those terms on those agreements are exactly the same, which then allowed us again to partner. So other items on here, the sound system in this room, video streaming, PEG channel, equipment upgrade, some of that equipment with Maria's help and Dustin's help, the bar had been installed. We did that recently here in the council chamber. So you can see, there's all the list of items there that we've already started working on for this year.
On behalf of the school, we just want to say thank you for the trust, but also for collaborating again with us. You know, Matt's a gem. He's a great IT leader. He understands what we need. He's a good steward of dollars, and I think through the partnership, we all benefit. So on behalf of the school, I'll say thank you to the city and thank you to employee Rick full-time for continuing to grow us.
Thank you. Dr. Quinn Danning, I got just a couple of things to add. I know that with our body cam situation through the police department, I was curious if you guys have looked into the active shooter part of that, which is, I think, if I'm not mistaken to what I understand, there's a piece that plugs into a 120 outlet that identifies a subsonic gun round going off. Have you guys, have you, are you part of that, or...
He's going to talk about that in just a second.
Okay, okay, I was just, okay. With IT side, I thought it may be appropriate.
Yeah, that was a big question.
And then the next, the next one I had is that I assume that you've got some really good IT seniors and juniors that, I assume that you are, Rick, are training and helping and having those guys set up PCs or, you know, doing help, you know, because IT's such a huge, important job in the future of a lot of students.
We were definitely, if you remember when we first started, we had the kids doing the health test for Chromebooks. That has continued. But in addition, our engineering side of STEM education has really grown. Under Dr. Warland and the partnership with Project Lead the Way, we're doing a lot more with that, so yes.
Great.
And we're excited about that. I mean, obviously, that is a big future for a lot of our kids.
Yes.
And I'll just tell you, as a dad, my son Ryan, who graduates in just a few weeks with computer engineering degree, and he started back in Ryan Mountie's class in, you know, the senior year. So when he went to the academy, that's something he really enjoyed. And he's going to graduate in just a few, two weeks with that. So that's just one. I think that's a good son. There are other kids in that same building doing texting thing, doing that IT thing and software side.
So you mentioned Seattle's a Google, or...
Ethan works for a small startup called Microsoft. So, yeah. But, yeah, so both of these affected them. He actually just notified that he can live anywhere they want in the world, anywhere they want now. So never know, maybe he'll come back to Franklin. All right, so I'd like to introduce Jeff Sewell. And Jeff's going to come up and just talk just a little bit about, and I should not be shy. This is Millie. Millie is our therapy dog that spends most of her day at Webb Elementary and helps kids. And then Hero spends most of the time at Northwood. So you going to stay here, though?
Sure, I think she'll be all right. So, yeah, I would like to introduce Millie and say you'll see us around the community. She works at Webb Elementary every day and has made a great impact there. If you ever see us out, please, don't hesitate to stop and say hello. We are definitely grateful for the community's support that made Millie and Hero possible. And we've just seen a tremendous impact in the schools where they're working. So I have the good fortune, good fortune of keeping her home and try to keep her training sharp, and so she's been a great addition to the community, so we do definitely appreciate that. On the S R O agreement, main thing, Lynn did a great job describing that. I won't belabor that. But again, collaboration is the key term here. It is so important that we have not only that good security presence in our schools that allows the rest of the police department to not be responding to calls to the school as frequently, but also just being that presence and that, just developing those relationships that help kids to understand that our law enforcement officers are in our communities to protect and serve. And so it's a great partnership, and we greatly appreciate it. We have been working closely with Chief Coggin and the sheriff's department on the issue of body cams and are working towards equipping the two sheriff's deputies that we employ with that equipment. We have been in conversations about the gunshot detection system that is part of the police system, and we'll have to continue that dialogue and see how fund that or how that may fit into our security strategy.
I just didn't know, Dr. Sewell, if you had yet or not, or...
We have not, you know, they're like in first phase of that, as you know. So Will, that'll be coming down the road as sort of something they've been in conversation with us about, so. Yep. Thank you.
As Jeff mentioned, Millie, one of the things that we're actually doing, we just put a deposit down on our third dog. That dog actually goes to C D I S, thanks. And then Creekside, as we did, you know, fourth, would be federal COVID dollars. Put that in Esra, we call it Esra three, and that's where that's going to come from and some of that. But I'll tell you, the dogs are amazing. They've helped many kids, but I'll tell you, they've also helped many adults through this COVID. We actually keep some hard data that we're sharing with the board on how these dogs impact us, so it's pretty amazing. I'm sure we'll start uncovering a few stories about Millie and his wife as well. Sure, we saw on cover there are a few stories about Millie and his wife as well. I'm going to shift gears, if I may, to action items. And I'm pleased to bring both of these candidates to our board. First up is Elizabeth Edwards. Elizabeth is coming to us from North DRC's Indianapolis. Jill Overton's been with us for about 15, 16 years. She's decided to retire. I can't believe she wants to retire out of this bug year. She is going to retire. And I'm asking the board to accept the recommendation of Elizabeth Edwards as our food service director.
Is there any questions for Dr. Clint Dinning on that? Do you have a motion? Thank you, Brian. And a second. Thank you, Christie. Brian, have you voted?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
I hope yes. That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And she will begin next week as we do a partnership and training together with Jennifer Shetty to say goodbye. Tonight, I'm also going to ask Mr. Dodi to come forward. We have the opportunity to hire a new basketball coach. Our new basketball coach is a familiar face in the community. And he was a candidate that was quickly identified in the search by Mr. Dodi and Mr. Ahouse. It took a turn away to Bill to introduce the candidate that we nailed down and selected to recommend to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Clint Dinning. You know, as I sit in this back row by this, our new head basketball coach, soon to be, as soon as the board ratifies that, it hit me that this is the most appropriate meeting for him to be announced. This is Franklin, and he's from Franklin. He's a Franklin kid. Excuse me, young man. Grew up in Franklin. I'm not kidding for him. He grew up in Franklin. He believes blue. He cares about the kids of Franklin. So, you know, that, that's what rang true to me and through to me when I first started talking about him taking this role on. He mentors kids, but the vehicle he does that through is, is being a basketball coach. And I think our, our families and our kids are going to be well served through his mentorship. He's a winner. He's a one at all levels. As a player, he's won it as, as a coach too. And so it's, it's my privilege to seek the approval of Adrian Moss as our next boys' basketball coach.
Any questions for Mr. Dodi? Mr. Moss, Ryan Wagner was not able to attend this evening, but he wanted to let you know that he is very excited with the joint event. So welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion for this action? Thank you, Christie. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Becky. Brian, have you voted?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
I hope yes. Welcome, Mr. Moss.
I want to put you on the spot.
First picking.
Just want to start by saying thank you guys so much. I appreciate the opportunity. So excited to get started. I've been a part of Franklin for a long time. My parents are a part of Franklin. You talk to my dad and mom, they're never going to move. We moved here in middle school, and Franklin has been nothing but good to me and my family from the start to the finish. And I'm so excited to get started. I appreciate you guys having me. And I thank you guys for approving me. And I appreciate Mr. Dodi. Thank you so much for reaching out and getting this thing started. I'm just excited. Appreciate you guys. And please step out to a game and check us out, and you will see a good product on the court.
No going to a game, please. No question. Just observation. Fellow Northwood and law.
Mr. Dinning, I was concerned you were going to say Bob Hukin was the.
He's Franklin too. He grew up, he's a kid here too.
Well, you blew it itself. I was just like, oh, fine.
I would say that Coach Boss is going to be in our building. He's going to be in the high school. He's going to be employed there, not just as a basketball coach, but he will be working with kids in the building as well. So we're excited to have Adrian back as, you know, in, in blue. And he's been at Fisher's High School. His most recent job was at Fisher's High School as the RC Assistant University Coach there. And we're excited to have him back and we'll get going.
Hey, is Dad still rough? Franklin?
He's getting, he's getting up there in age, but he's still, he's still, he's still my schedule now. Thank you. Thank you.
So in a few weeks, Adrian will also be out into the community and meet everybody. And then we'll have summer camps coming up. And then next season, we get started. So it's an exciting time for professional basketball. I want to thank the board for accepting the recommendation and the hire. We're all excited to have Adrian Moss be our coach. All right. With that, that concludes the school portion. Just join the city council meeting. But I do want to just say thank you to the city council. Here we have another night that you've been coming and going to allow us to talk about a collaboration all over the world. And they, they are one of the best in Indiana. They have a heart of kids. So proud of all the citizens, and that's what makes it special. And with that, I'll send the back.
Mayor, do you have anything?
That.
Thank you, Dr. Clint Dinning. I just want to say thank you to the school board and our city council. The collaboration that's shown here tonight with, you know, like our programs that we share together, the IT and, and school resource officers, that's huge. There's nobody else in the state of Indiana that does this. Come together, get to see the, the coach being hired tonight here in the Franklin room. So it's, it's awesome. Thank you guys for that.
Sir, do you have any other comments? Just, just to add to the thanks and the partnership, one thing that Dr. Clint Dinning and crew did mention, that, that partnership benefits our students. So the IT work that we brought in, those extra capabilities, when 10X was happening and we saw teachers come back and giving us a report of the 10X, they were showing us where they were in the classroom with the kids. They made, we had a teacher that had a code three, and she was in a Google class, right, live with her students. It's that partnership that means it's that extra capability that we can put right back to the students. So thank you for that.
I personally want to thank Mrs. Ott too. I served her on the Franklin Development Corporation. And she, she's always there, always attended, working with us. And I appreciate her. I'll call me the jury.
Can we do public comment?
Please. I apologize.
I probably will, but wait down.
I apologize.
And I wrote down what I wanted to say, so I didn't put out anything. Good evening. My name is Barbara Jankowski. I have had my shot to vote with them, so I will say, full disclosure, I live in Indy. But my daughter, son-in-law, and my two granddaughters live in Franklin. My oldest granddaughter is leaving Webb this year and going to CBIS. And my youngest is starting Creeque at Northwood. Before I begin, I meant to read you something. backstory, each year I prepare little holiday goodie bags for two to three classrooms at Webb. Nothing elaborate, candy, pencils, erasers, some small toys. One year, the second grade teacher had the students write me a note. This is what she wrote. Dear Miss Barlow, hi, my name is, and I won't say it, and I just want to say thanks for the candy, because you don't have to do it all the holidays. And it is okay not to do it, because you are spending all your money. And I want you to have money for yourself. And all I want you to do is to make sure you're doing stuff for yourself too. Thanks for the candy. And I keep that letter to remind myself why I do what I do. As they say, it takes a village to raise a child. Today it takes city, the school system, businesses, and citizens to support and applaud the children of Franklin. I usually prefer to keep a low profile, but I want to share what I do to challenge everybody else in Franklin. This past school year, Webb PTL had a vision to provide basics, I mean, bare basics, school supplies for each student. I am proud to say I was able to provide approximately 60% of those school supplies. I do what I do because I never want a child to feel less than, less than their peers who have plenty and nice supplies, less than their peers who have pretty new backpacks, but I don't. I don't tell you this to get a pat on the back. I tell you this because I am only one person. Just think what we could do if we had community involvement. For the upcoming school year and every year thereafter, the dream, vision, and adventure for all the elementary principals, and I've been working with Colza, and he's been talking to the others, is to provide every elementary student with 100% of their supplies, everything. They don't need to bring a thing to school. I have reached out to Rusty, the store manager at Carter. He's going to donate 2,000 of those reusable shopping bags so that each school can fill them up with supplies. He is also reaching out to corporate, corporate to investigate doing a special shopping event. We need to imagine big, huge. For example, we need to imagine a weekend event. Or, Mary, you're talking about festivals downtown, depending upon COVID. Where we can do donations. We're going to have activities for the kids. We can have food trucks. We can have a fire truck there for the kids to get their picture taken with the fire truck. Colza, the principal of Webb, would like to expand this in upcoming years to have a Franklin 5K, where the funds would go to support the schools. Chief Coggin and I had been discussing an event, something like this for last summer. But boom, COVID hit. Yes, COVID will dictate what we can and can't do this year. Presently excluding backpacks and headphones, I have approximately 80 to 90% of the supplies for August for Webb. We might need somebody's help with a box truck to get it out of my garage. That's from shopping clearance, sales. I was it. I also have reached out to Darius Leonard's Maniac Foundation for help with donations of backpacks. So if you know Darius, or have a connection to him, or, you know, maybe Matt Gaylor, the voice to the Colts, have them give me a call. I have also reached out to U.S. Representative Andre Carson and Senator Braun to champion the case for the USDA to provide free meals for all schools forever, not just during COVID. So they haven't, so far they haven't called me. But if you have a connection to any of them or anybody else, have a call me. I'm passionate about the kids of Franklin, who are beautiful, rainbow of colors. So I'm challenging the movers and shakers of Franklin, or any business that needs a tax deduction, to help our children to never feel less than again. Thank you for allowing me to prolong your evening. I'm, I'm a big supporter of Franklin's government. So if you need my phone number or anything, let me know.
Thank you so much. I apologize. I guess I should ask for a comment.
I'm not shy.
Thank you so much. Obviously not. And thank you for what you do, honestly. Yeah, I'll probably get your phone number. So anyway, does anyone else have anything? Okay. Rejder, go to congratulations.